I'd like to call to order the Iredell County Board of Commissioners four o'clock pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, August the 5th, 2025. At this time, I'd like to ask the county manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? I know we've got at least one.
We do. We do have one adjustment to the agenda, and that's the addition of Administrative Matters, item 8.10. That's on the dais before you, and it's the Brookwood End Displacement Response Initiative. So again, that would be Administrative Matters, item 8.10.
Okay, thank you. We do not have any special recognitions or awards for this evening, but we do have an appointment before the board. Tonight's appointment before the board will be Presentation from Parks and Recreation, Thank You Video, and it'll be at 6:00. We also follow the list down to the agenda. We have three public hearings, and do you want to start with the first one, please, ma'am?
Absolutely, thank you. The first one is a request to rezon approximately 3.49 acres at the corner of Halliburton Road and Taylorsford Highway, and Mr. Matthew Todd is here to give you a quick briefing on this rezoning.
I can summarize this one and the next agenda item up pretty quick in the same breath. Both of these match the land use plan, staff recommendations for both of them, unanimous vote at Planning Board. We've not had any phone calls to express opposition. Also, at Planning Board, there was no opposition in attendance then either. And I'll, of course, give the full presentation at 6:00.
Anybody got any questions? It's 4:00.
I've actually walked both of these kind of very close to my area. I actually walked out, and it makes good sense.
You should call it. Everybody good, right?
Good for me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So we do have one more public hearing after the two rezoning public hearings, and that is an Economic Development Incentive public hearing for Project ACE 25, and that again will be at the 6:00 hour.
Now brings us down to our administrative matters that we covered at 4:00 by consent, and I'll turn it back over to county manager so we can knock those out.
Absolutely, thank you. First and foremost, and what we have typically done when we have new members in our leadership positions, we ask them to come to the first commissioner meeting so you can actually put a face with a name and make an introduction if they have any, anything they'd like to say. So I'd like to introduce Daryl Conley. He is our new Director of Public Safety. He started on Monday of last week, so he is in his second week. The good news is, he did come back for his second week, so that's good. But he has over 30 years' experience in law enforcement, emergency management. So, Daryl, do you have anything that you want to say to the board?
Ma'am, I'd just like to say, number one, Beth, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the board here and the citizens of Iredell County. As has been stated, my name is Daryl Conley. I do have 30 years of experience in law enforcement and public safety and all things related to keeping people safe. I look forward to the opportunity to work with the board and the county manager and make Iredell County one of the best places to live, not just in the state, but in the entire country. So I look forward to working hand-in-hand with you all, and anything I can do, ma'am, to assist us in making sure all of our residents are safe, I'll be glad to do.
Perfect.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions of me?
Just welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Yes, ma'am. And I did come back for week number two.
We're thankful for that. Thank you for that.
Thank you all. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the first administrative matter that we have is a presentation from Mooresville Graded School District on the proposed opioid funding partnership between Iredell and Iredell County and the school systems within Iredell County. So Mr. Rodney Harris is going to tee this up for you.
So we still have a lot of details that we need to work out, but we wanted to get this before you to see if this is something the board is interested in, and if it is, we'll work on the next few weeks to flesh out those details and those agreements that would be necessary to deliver this program through the opioid settlement funding. So we've got three representatives from Mooresville Graded School District here, and I'm going to turn it over to them. So we have Sandy Albert, Lindsay Pharo, and Eric Babbitt here, and I'm going to turn it over to Sandy.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I want to take a moment to thank you all for listening to our presentation. As you'll see on the coming slides, we're going to talk all about how we're going to serve some of our students in Mooresville Graded School District related to issues of substance abuse, mental health, and of course, those related conditions. You'll also see that we're going to focus our efforts on our secondary students and those that are in our alternative learning program. So we chose option one, option A, strategy number six, to look at programs, services, and training to encourage early identification intervention for adolescents who may be struggling with problematic use of drugs or mental health conditions. And as you can see on the right-hand side, our school alignment, we already, we currently have some built-in issues, not issues, but we have some built-in strategies and structures related to identifying students, but also supporting them through our comprehensive mental health team, and you'll hear a little bit more about that later. But we want to address substance use, mental health, and attendance challenges. We also want to focus early intervention for secondary students. Like I said, we want to serve our students identified under the opioid settlement, and I also want to make sure that I may make mention of, sorry, that we want to focus on our at-risk students and those that are traditionally underserved youth, because those are, those are some of the students that often fall through the cracks.
Hi. I'm here to talk about the positions and a little bit about the first and second year of the program. We're looking at the first position that we want, we are asking for is a student wellness intervention specialist, and this would be a licensed clinician who can provide group and individual therapy for our students with substance or specifically substance use, but also maybe some of that mental health that can lead into substance issues, as we know those go hand-in-hand. And we do have a population of students who are underinsured, uninsured, that can always access services. So having our own person would be crucial to getting them some help. This person would also provide therapeutic and educational services, like Dr. Albert said, on our middle, high school, and alternative school campuses, and they will lead educational sessions for vaping-related suspension through our suspension reduction program. And then they would be a member of a rapid response team in the event that we had a student in crisis, whether it be a mental health or substance abuse crisis. And then we're also asking for a social worker who would be really that link between the school, the families, and the community support. So they would help us with identifying needs of families and being able to help us get to the root cause of what's going on with students, whether it be through attendance or mental health. That way, we can make sure we're linking them with the appropriate services, and they'll take, well, they'll spend a lot of time analyzing attendance for mental health or substance use issues. And they'll also help coordinate that suspension reduction program and any kind of student reintegration after absences, and we are hoping that they can be our representative to attend community coalition meetings such as DAKI. And then some other key program components is we'll provide mandatory group and individual counseling for students who have those suspension offenses related to substance use. We'll conduct threat assessments, suicide assessments, and crisis assessments through our multi-disciplinary teams. They'll be a part of that multi-disciplinary team. They'll review and adjust crisis plans and return-to-school protocols, be a part of that team, and then partnering with community agencies for therapy and education support, and they'll use evidence-based tools for screening for mental health and substance use. And then they will establish, help establish a rapid response team for substance crisis and prevention, and then implement alternatives to suspension such as that education, vaping education, and substance-related, for those substance-related offenses. The year, in year one this year, what we were to hope is, once we're able to hire and onboard those two positions, we can immediately use data from last school year to identify students for them to begin counseling, individual and group sessions with, and any new offenses that occur, since we're starting school tomorrow between now and the time they're hired, we'll also use that, those referrals as well. We'll train those, we'll get the staff trained on the SASE, which is the screening tool in the Prime for Life curriculum, so that they can be up and ready to go as soon as possible with those. We'll identify those students again from using last year's data in the beginning of school. We'll launch a data tracking system once we establish a baseline and can begin to track from there, and then we'll continue to build on those community partnerships and conduct quarterly reporting. Year two, expansion and impact, we hope to expand upon the services to more students as we learn and grow based on this year's data. So we'll always be analyzing and refining supports based on the data that we collect. We'll hope to increase small group sessions if those are proving successful. We'll monitor progress towards our goals and engage more families in outreach, and then, of course, evaluating return-to-school plans, and then also we'll continue with that annual report and then look for grant renewal preparation.
All right, good evening. I'm just going to go over some of our, you know, program goals and evaluation. So as a district, we're committed to making a measurable, measurable impact. So one of our primary goals is to, to see a 30% decrease in disciplinary actions related to substance abuse. And we think that's important just to reduce those punitive responses and replace them with some supportive interventions to help keep students on track and in school. In addition to that, we want to target a 10% decrease in absenteeism, including those suspension days that may not happen. And that's really important for students that struggle with mental health or substance abuse issues. We're going to improve, hope to improve academic targets. Once we have our baseline data, we'll have a little bit better of a number there. But we know that mental health directly affects learning, so that is, that is important. We plan to provide quarterly and annual reports, really just to ensure transparency, and we plan to have annual planning and review meetings to ensure alignment with the county's expectations. The long-term success of this initiative depends on collaborative and sustainability. So we're planning to build, or we're building a program that relies not just on schools, but strong community, school-based, school and community partnerships. Each year, we will include shared planning and evaluation involving schools, families, and county stakeholders. And again, this is, this ensures everyone has a voice in shaping the program. During breaks, we can work together to reassign the staff members that we've hired so that, so that we can keep services active and student engagement is continuous. Our ultimate long-term goal is wellness, school safety, and student achievement, and all those things go hand-in-hand. To sustain the scale and the work, we'll train existing school teams in substance abuse and mental health intervention strategies, and we will also support certification pathways so that more staff are equipped to provide targeted supports. Building a sustainable program also means planning for funding and long-term infrastructure. So one important step is training staff in Medicaid billing, and that will allow, allow access to long-term reimbursement for eligible services, and that, that helps ensure sustainability after the grant has ended. We are embedding wellness into existing programs like MTSS, safety teams, and, and our student support structures, and this, this will ensure that wellness isn't treated as a standalone effort, but part of how we do as a school system. Our student advisory councils, you know, I think those are, those are huge, important to get students involved. I think, as we know, students will, are usually impacted by their peers more so than adults when it comes to these things. So we plan to educate on how to recognize red flags with our students. And on the staff side, we'll continue to strengthen our crisis response protocols through training and rapid response tools. And finally, we hope to seek out new grants and partnerships to extend the life of the, the program. And thank you. We appreciate you appearing tonight. Any questions?
What is the, what have y'all looked at? I guess I'll speak to y'all and Rodney and Beth. On the revenue side, what's actually the request to get started for you guys? I see Beth in our notes, it says both school systems have similar requests. So I guess my question is, do we mirror these opportunities if we do that for both systems to try this? And what kind of revenue are we looking at? Have y'all looked at any of that yet?
So that's the information that we're going to bring you, assuming you give us the green light to move forward, hopefully in September, October. And the reason we don't have that yet is because the Mooresville Graded model is more fleshed out. We have to determine what resources we would provide to Iredell Statesville Schools. We also need to work with, and I was going to go into some logistics, we're proposing to use Partners Health Management to hire these staff and to manage these staff. That avoids some challenges with school funding. We need to know what the market rate is for those resources, and we haven't had those discussions yet because we didn't want to get too far ahead of the board if you don't want us to proceed that.
I guess that's my request, because we've, my question too is, is to your point, the, the funding, since we, you know, if it's funded on the current expense side, we have to, we got three systems we have to, to fund. So if it's, if the services are provided either by the county or through partners, and then those people, I'm assuming, when you work it out, may be assigned to each system to work with them, and that way, it gets us through the logistical things that we need to go through.
Yes, that is the basis.
So I think, I think it's a well-needed situation. It just depends on the numbers and the longevity. And on the Medicaid side and stuff, since that's opioid funding, that would pretty much be behind, I'm assuming, the, the overhead and personnel and things like that. Would we be able to build immediately, once that program was started, from each system, from the partners and people to start building that account back up for sustainability? Or do you know the answer to that yet?
We would have to get that answer. I'm certainly not an expert on Medicaid funding, and with all the changes at a federal level, I'm not sure what will be there.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'm, I'd love to hear more, and I think working through partners or whomever to get these people to help in the systems, that's the most important thing, work those logistics out. I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. I think kind of some of the same thoughts. Is there, on the opioid settlement, is there a timeframe that all funds have got to be expended by, or is it a 18-year?
The, the money is available for 18 years. We're probably three or four years into it, so I would say we probably have 14 years left of that funding. And really, our goal and purpose is to make sure that we reach as many different areas and citizens of our county that are struggling with this. And one way to get ahead of it is, is to help our youth, to make sure it does not grow and perpetuate and become a longstanding problem. So, you know, we're doing, we're doing various things with our peer support program and things of that nature. We have a program at our detention center, but really, this is, this is a very focused program on our younger population. So we can change those behaviors before they become a, you know, a systemic problem that perpetuates itself over and over. So with the help of Mooresville Graded, they, we put out an RFP for proposals. They submitted us. It was, it was a great proposal, and it's something that, that we really think could really make a difference, and we could replicate that in Iredell Statesville as well. But we wanted to bring this before the commissioners to make sure that we were headed in the right direction and that the, the board saw this to be a good purpose for some of that funding before we continue to go down that road. We wanted to make sure we were going in the right direction.
Try to deal with it proactively or, or reactively. You're gonna, it's going to impact us unfortunately, so we better our best try to head it off where we can. There's a problem out there, especially I saw the vaping and all kinds of things that are major problems, you know, the, the lack of regulations on that, you know, getting these kids hooked on the, the vapes and stuff, and we need to get this thing going. I mean, I think, thank you for your work on it, and Rodney, and I think it's, I think it would be, it's needed.
I will say that, and Jeff is here, so I will, we'll speak for Jeff a little bit with partners. We have reached out to partners, and they are interested in learning more about what we need and seeing if they can help us.
That was going to be my question.
So we have, we have already talked to them, and Jeff said, absolutely, I want to sit at the table, and let's talk about how, you know, how we can figure out how to do this. So I appreciate having a great partner with partners.
That's good. So it's looking at, the biggest, one of the biggest challenges is having the right person in the right position to get the most impact, most help for the students. And so that is where, that's one of the, leading into what you were just mentioning, is the partners' behavioral health, be able to have that expertise, to have the right person in that position, because you don't have time to train a person, if you will, to get in there and, and jump right in to these goals. So basically, the ask for that funding would help to fund those positions then, correct? Okay.
It'd be assigned maybe to the systems potentially. That's the logistics that'll work out, I think.
And using that expertise there. So yes, on that, just that clarification takes care of my, my questioning too, to make sure that it's all going in that, that direction, so.
Thank you for your work.
Anything else, Rodney? Anybody got anything? We're Rodney. Everybody good if we proceed?
We're good to proceed.
We have consent.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rodney.
The next item is a request from the Tax Office to accept the 2024 annual tax settlement to issue orders for collection and to approve advertisement of prior-year tax liens to the Property Tax Commission. And Mr. Bill Furchess is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good afternoon.
Good morning, sir.
I am here as a requirement of law to present the settlement for the 2024 taxes, ask for your, to accept that, issue, issue, order for collections, and give me permission to advertise prior-year tax liens to the Property Tax Commission that were made unpaid. I don't know of any, but it could happen. This year was a pretty good report. I've got a very good report. I'm not happy with the collection rate, but it is a good report. Our tax levy, if you're looking on your front page areas, was $215,882,000. We collected $214,313,000. We have a remainder of outstanding taxes for 24 of $1,569,000. Our collection rate was 99.27%. This is our seventh year over 99%. Excluded motor vehicles were 99.21%. I will point out up here to the topic, motor vehicle taxes went up 10% this past year, which was good for us because we don't have to do a lot, make a lot of effort to collect that. On our delinquent collections for 2025, it was, we collected $1,480,000, and I believe that's for 2024, and we had $249,000 more than the year, last year. However, we had, we had more to collect, that's one thing. Our outstanding delinquent taxes for the fiscal years 16 through 24 was $1,517,000. That's out of a levy of $1,276 million. So that is 11 one-hundredths of 1% uncollected out of those past nine years. The only party I know that has a better collection rate than this, probably the mafia.
They say you're part of that, Bill.
Sir?
I've seen your stick.
We have, in 2025 taxes, we've already collected about $312,000. If you'll turn the page there, I'll give you my numbers, my bragging numbers. We collected $9.6 million more in Iredell County taxes than the previous year, up 4.5%, 7%. We collected $5,547,000 more than was budgeted, 102.64% of the original budget. That 5.5 million is $735,000 more than the entire tax administration budget, not the collector, the tax administration budget. The 21-year cumulative total, we've collected 42, 43.4 over-budget revenues, and on our delinquent tax collections, we've collected almost $33 million over the last 21 years. For all jurisdictions, we collected $333 million, 15.3 million more than in '24. Below that, you'll see some of the actions we've taken for tax collections. I'll just point out one thing. On garnishments, we went, we're up about 47% more than we did last year, and that's a last resort, but we're having to do that quite a bit. Some of our problems we have, and this is not a major problem, bankruptcy, we have 58 for $83,000. $83,000 is immaterial to our total budget, total collections, that is. Foreclosures, that is ones that were filed by mortgage companies with the clerk court. We had 250. It's an increase from 203 from prior year. Also, I just mentioned to you, we have a continuous problem with North Carolina DOT, International Registration Plan plates. They issue the plates to these truckers, and then we have to try to find them and collect them, and we are not very successful with it. These trucks are all over the country, and they operate out of a, an apartment or something like that. It's very difficult for us to collect these taxes. This is something the DOT could do for us. Another thing is my pet peeve is gap bills, which the state of North Carolina, excuse me, North Carolina Department of Transportation stuck us with and causes a tremendous problem for our staff with minimal results. This year, we had 5,603 bills we sent out for $432. And these are people that did not pay their, they're, did not renew their tag on time. 5,000, well, it's actually more than that, 6,000, but we didn't bill 451 of them. But there's 16 more percent more than last year, and we set a new record, a record low for collections. 54.6% is all we collected on these. Last year, usually, we could collect 60 to 62%. Of course, we keep after them year after year. The amount of uncollected for Iredell County would equal six points on our, six basis points on our collection rate. Anyway, I'll complain about that more. On the last page here, we've got our collection rates of the last nine years. The column on your left is the fiscal year, with the, in the middle is the original collection rate at June 30 of that year, and the column on the right is the collection rate at June 30 of 2025. And you see, you'll see after we generally, once we get up to 99.91 or 93%, that's about all we're going to get. And our nine-year collection rate is 99.89%. We have increased 23 basis points since 2018 from 99.66 to 99.89, so I'm proud of that. Dead set off is proportionately, does not mean a lot to us as far as the collection rate, but we are ranked 16th in the state out of 532 units. And for counties, we're ranked 12th in the state. Foreclosures, this is county-instigated foreclosures. We've sent 1,421 properties to foreclosure over, since 2012. We've settled 86.91% of those cases. We have 186 remaining. We've collected $17.3 million, which, this is all jurisdictions, so it doesn't mean a lot to the collection rate, but it does get people thinking when you send them the pre-foreclosure statement. Couple of the numbers I just want to mention to you. We do, we collect other things besides taxes. Our collections fees, gross receipts fees, gross receipts to short-term and heavy equipment rentals, penalties and interest, beer and wine, garnishment fees equals 2.4 million. I want to point out one thing here. Our short-term rentals and heavy equipment were only $149,000 this year. and heavy equipment were only 149,000 this year. Last year, they were 452,000. That's sort of an indication to me of a slowing economy. Kind of concerns me. Uh, as I just mentioned to you again, last year, we lost six people with 200 years' experience and we're trying to catch up, trying to catch up. The tax collector still has only eight positions in it for the last 19 years. And that, one of them is me, and I've been the, the tax administrator for almost 15 years. And we're collecting 3.5 times more than we did 19 years ago. The tax administration budget for this, the current year is one point, we are 1.4% of the total budget and we'll collect 65.5% of the revenues. Uh, tax bills will be going out Friday. However, we've got a little problem. Uh, there was a miscommunication with the landfill and our provider, but I don't know, but the, the uh, what do you call, collection, excuse me, uh, garbage tags. What do you call those dirty things?
Sticker for the, the year, the sticker that says?
Yeah, stickers. Thank you. Uh, got waylaid and we're, we're gonna send out 39,000 bills on Friday that do not have, have stickers. And then Monday, we're gonna send out 77 landfill stickers on Monday. 77,000. So if that's all I've got, unless you have any questions, I would ask you to accept this and issue me orders and I'll be on my way.
Bill, will you, uh, will you get me some information on, uh, I'll take to the NCACC and try to get some legislation on, a remedy on the DOT trucking situation where DOT could try to collect some of those fees for you.
Okay.
And about the DMV late fees, are they not collecting that when they, people renew their tag or is the late fees billed to them later?
What happens is, is like if you go in and renew your tag two months late, they just start a new year, which makes no sense to me. Start a new year and they send us uh, the information that you didn't pay it.
When they could collect it right then.
And then we have to bill it.
Okay.
And if they didn't pay it, they didn't renew their tag on time, their, their likelihood of paying, paying it is 54.6%. So.
So to me, there's, if you can get me, if you don't mind, some information on both of those situations.
Okay.
I'll look at, trying to get some remedies for that, uh, in our, in our legislative process through the NCACC.
Be very good.
And um, so, and I always say this publicly, the importance of the high collection rate for the citizens is without that collect, high collection rate, the revenues we spend and to take care of county responsibilities for all of our county departments and everything, the tax rate would have to be higher to pay for those things. So I always try to explain to people the importance of you guys having a high collection rate. It keeps the property tax low, rate low and uh, it provides the revenue that we need to uh, run operations month to month. You know, people always ask sometimes about us bragging about the collection rate. And I said, the reason that's important is because it saves you money in the long run because our tax rate would be higher if they didn't collect at that high rate. So thank you for what you're doing. And if you'll get me that information.
All right, we'll do.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Just one quick question. You said, since there's gonna be the gap in time to fill those envelopes with the sticker for the landfill, are those stickers still coming into the tax office?
No, sir. No, they'll be cut, they go to our, our, the person, our vendor that sends out the tax bills, they insert them. Uh, they wanted to send them to the tax office and we said, no.
I was wondering, okay, that's.
I'd have 50,000 people in there.
Yeah, okay.
So, no, we, we unfortunately had to delay it till Monday. But uh, but it won't make a lot of difference as far as getting the tax bills out to everybody.
But they will get their stickers at that time.
Yes, ma'am.
So that way we're not having empty.
Yes.
Thank goodness. Okay.
Thank goodness.
And if they don't get a sticker, they'll be able to get it at each of the sites.
Yeah, true. I get to show your ID. So if you don't have, perfect. Great information.
Thanks, all you do, Bill.
A lot, a lot you've, a lot of information you tracked for years.
Yeah.
So do we have, do we have consent?
Consent. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank your staff for us.
Items, a request from emergency management for approval of a contract amendment to upgrade the current unsolved code red emergency preparedness messaging to the unlimited version and to authorize the county manager to sign. And Mr. Kent Green is here to make this presentation to the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. I first came to the Board in December of last year with a request to change from hyper reach to this unsolved code red, uh, reverse 911 software. Uh, that was approved and we entered into the contract. Um, we got first, the first six months free, so we thought. Because I was like some software companies, there was some fine print they didn't point out. And uh, we were supposed to use 144,000 message units in a year. That's what was in the contract. So if I get a phone call, a text message and an email, that's three message units. By January 23rd, we had used our 144,000 message units. And by July 1, we had used 1,051,000. So our purchasing office got involved and were able to negotiate a contract to upgrade us to an unlimited number of message units. And over the three-year period of the contract, we'll still save about $9,000 compared to the old system. This is a request to have the county manager sign that agreement.
Any other questioning, questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The next item was request from finance for approval of budget amendment number three and to amend the facilities improvement fund capital project ordinance for design work for the animal services expansion project. Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the Board.
This project is, was included in the last FY25 budget for the design and construction of the project. Um, purchasing staff, animal services staff have gone out and started the design work in, in identifying a design, designer to, company to do the design work. Um, all we're asking for is the funds that are budgeted in the CIP to move them to the facility improvement fund. So we're only asking for a budget amendment in the general fund to move the funds to facility services fund or facility improvement fund and an a project ordinance amendment to recognize it within that fund. The total cost of the amendment that we're looking at for the design services is $127,350. So we'll be moving those funds from CIP to the facility improvement fund to be able to spend those funds.
Any questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Taylor also has the next item, and that's a request from finance for approval of budget amendment number two to recognize a donation from Partners Behavioral Health.
We received a donation from Partners of some furniture. We received 10 desks with hutches on them, seven bookcases, eight filing cabinets, six chairs and two lobby benches. And so because of the value of all of these furniture that was donated, we just need to recognize that in our general ledger. So we're bringing a budget, budget amendment of $17,800 just to recognize the donation of the furniture that we received.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
And appreciation.
And thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. The next item was a request from Parks and Recreation to apply for the Game Time Playground Grant. And Jacob is here to make this presentation to the Board with Parks and Rec.
Good afternoon. So this first grant opportunity is with Playtime. It's a playground manufacturing company. They're the parent company of the folks who we purchased the inclusive playground at Jennings from. They're offering a grant period, call it a grant, it's more of a discount. Um, it's a matching grant between 50% and 100% towards a playground. So in the budget currently, we have $40,000 earmarked for a playground at East Iredell Lions Club Community Park where there's currently zero playgrounds. So we love to, $40,000 doesn't go super far in the playground world. So if we can expand our, our purchasing power through this grant, either 50% or 100%, um, we'd love to do that. So we'd like to ask permission for that.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. And Jacob also has the next item, and that's a request from Parks and Recreation to apply for a grant from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yes, so this one is a non-matching grant. Uh, it's a federal grant. Um, so naturally there's a lot of money to go around. This one would be between 100,000 and 500,000. Um, every couple of years, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service does this grant with the intent to, a couple of things. Expand awareness, promote safety, promote best practices, um, improve recruitment of boaters and anglers. They want people to do those activities and do them safely. So this uh, proposal from Parks and Recreation would go towards a program, still ironing out which exact route we wouldn't, we would want to go with this program. But it would be something along the lines of promoting safe and ethical fishing, safe boating. So there's a couple of different project ideas. Um, I'll list a couple. It's top secret information. But uh, the, the probably frontrunner right now would be a, a programming trailer for fishing. Think of kind of a mirror image to what the library system has done with their mobile library unit, except this one would be fully fishing-based. So it's mobile. It can go to all different places, Stumpy Creek Park, Lake Norman State Park, different Duke Energy Sites. It could come to a, one of the school system schools and uh, teach kids about STEM through fishing and the local opportunities we have here. There's a bunch of people that fish in this county. We've got the largest lake in the state, but there's a lot of people who maybe have never ventured into that world. So this would be an outreach opportunity. That's the frontrunner right now in our minds. But there's a couple others, um, maybe some partnerships with uh, the Iredell County Sheriff's Office Lake Patrol to do some boater safety at the beginning of the boater season. Or maybe um, fishing-related, programmable but loanable, uh, kayaks, paddleboards that are specifically for fishing. So there's a couple ideas. So that's where we're at. But uh, would love to entertain this opportunity to pursue the money for this, for this program.
So the, the request would be for, are you making a specific request of an amount between 100,000 and 500,000? Or are you requesting 500,000?
We, it won't be as high as 500,000. Since that project is still up in the air, the total cost is still up in the air. It'll definitely be towards that lower end, 100.
But I'm saying, can you not, is there a limit on what you can apply for?
So there's, there's three different categories. The, the local, which is a project that we're thinking of, would be between 100 and 500. Then there's state level and national level.
What I meant by is the max, if your, if your local max is 500,000, if you worked with the sheriff's office to do a joint application on behalf of the county and, and include the boat safety and all those things, you know, why not go for the maximum amount of the uh, local grant and then already have a plan in place and do a joint application? I mean, I'm just saying, I think, would that not make the request stronger?
I, I, I think that once they, if they get permission to apply for this grant, they're gonna go after as much as they can based on the program that they feel like they can do and the partners that they can pull in. Um, and the maximum would be up to 500. So I don't think that they would leave money on the table, seeing how they've gone after as many grants as they can to, to add amenities at no cost to our taxpayers. But if that is something that they could do, then I, and they can justify going after 500, I think they would.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I think you're wasting uh, potential there if you don't get with the sheriff's office and do a joint application and go after the 500. If, if anything less than that's still a gift. But I'm saying, I think if you go in with a prepared uh, plan to use 500,000 for all the things you mentioned, from boater safety to um, education and fishing opportunities for kids and whatever, I, I just think the chance of you getting more is when you justify more. Cause I know they look at all that. I mean, that's just my request to get with them and get with the sheriff and them and apply jointly. Uh, I know they look at some of those joint applications harder than they do individual applications.
Sure.
That would be, that would be my request is.
Yes, sir.
Go after the whole thing and, cause I know there's a need for the boater safety and all those other things. You know, we've heard some of that recently with our revamping of our Marine Commission and all those things.
Yes, sir.
Anybody get anything else? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from administration to adopt a resolution to reconstitute the Lake Norman Marine Commission. Um, and I know that the Board is aware of this, but the previous Lake Norman Marine Commission dissolved the end of June of this, this past month. So uh, that commission dissolved because one county withdrew from a participation in the commission, which the current legislation at that time resulted in dissolving of the commission. So Senator Sawyer worked with everyone to get additional legislation approved, which was passed to reconstitute the Marine Commission. So the four member counties have to adopt a resolution to reconstitute and bring back Lake Norman Marine Commission. This is the first piece of that. So once each county, and I'm looking to Ms. Valdez to add what I missed. So once each county adopts the resolution to reconstitute the Board, then uh, each county gets two appointments. You have to appoint two board members on that new Marine Commission. And then those eight board members will come together and appoint a ninth board member. Uh, and then that will be the membership. And then of course, that Board will have to go through and adopt bylaws and, and all the different things that are required for starting the Marine Commission again. So Ms. Valdez, did I miss anything? Do you want to add to this?
I don't believe that you did. Um, Lincoln County adopted their joint resolution last night. I believe Catawba County has already adopted theirs and Mecklenburg may be doing theirs tonight. I know it was.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Um, and I don't know if any other members have been appointed yet by those two counties thus far. Um, and then just I would point to the criteria, when you do consider appointing the members, the criteria that's in the, the statute about where they live and that sort of thing, um, when you, when you consider that.
I know one of the things for us to, you know, during that process, I think it's gonna be important that we appoint people to that Board if we don't appoint any commissioners, is people that have late experience, late knowledge. I really haven't talked to the guy that was, we appointed to serve on the old Marine Commission, but I know that person had extensive experience. And I know um, one of the applicants, Jason Ralston, has experience. I don't know if Christian has specific experience on the lake or not. But I'm, I think it's gonna be vitally important to put people on that commission that has background with the way the old Marine Commission functioned and with, you know, some boater laws and all those things. I think that, I think we ought to look at that really careful to make sure that the people on that uh, commission for us has that type of background experience.
Anybody got anything else?
Just one other quick point. When you consider appointments, that the statute does require one is a four-year term and one is a five-year term. So make sure that you distinguish that at such time you're ready to appoint.
Right.
And attendance was a priority too. They're taking, tracking attendance, is that correct on that Board?
I don't remember seeing that. Maybe you're right. You may be right. I don't know.
Can't remember on that one.
I think it was a max of two. You could miss, I think, and the Board had to reappoint.
That's not even all the meeting dates. No, that's been established at this point.
That has not been established.
Right now, we're looking at resolution, correct?
Just to reconstitute the commission.
Okay.
Anybody anything else? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from administration to approve the minutes from the July 15th, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The final item is the item that we added to the agenda, and that is uh, Brookwood Inn Displacement Response Initiative. And um, I'd like to, thank you, I'd like to introduce Joe Mazzola that is gonna come forward and make a quick uh, presentation to the Board regarding this request. And he is uh, the chairman. Thank you. I want to make sure I got your title correct.
You're fine. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you very much for giving us a few moments to come and bring this initiative to you. As we know, the Brookwood Inn is uh, pending closure come August 31st with a displacement of upwards of 70 families. Um, there's been a longstanding community collaborative for several months to a couple of years, actually, planning to figure out what to do when the Brookwood Inn is closed and these families are displaced. So um, we have at Fifth Street, and I have the pleasure of serving as their Board Chair, created an initiative which we are gonna be the lead uh, agency on, but we're gonna work collaboratively with multiple agencies. And we have already hired a project manager to go in and do crisis intervention for the families that are there. So our request today is really to help fund this initiative, which was not budgeted for by Fifth Street. We have, uh, we're looking for multi-stores funding, city, county, private investors, private donors. Um, in the tune of $80,000, our request for you today is a $25,000 support. Our goal, of course, is to prevent homelessness of these families. We want to transition these families to safe and secure housing. Uh, each one of the families will get a comprehensive intake. They'll get an, an individualized transition plan. They'll get case management. And we'll do short-term follow-up to ensure that they are safe and secure for a few months. We see this as a time-limited initiative. It's a crisis response. We believe that this community uh, working together can take care of these families. And really what could be a tremendous black eye to our community if these families become homeless, could be turned into a really great uh, project for our community, our county, our citizens and these families. Um, happy to answer any questions about this initiative. Um, but our request today is for a $25,000 support.
Thank you. And Jeff Eads, I know you're sitting back there. You're not gonna be sitting too long, are you? We, we reached out to Jeff and spoke to Jeff of Partners. Jeff is with Partners Behavioral. We reached out to him to ask him if they had any funding available. He said that we do have some funding that is sitting in the Partners He said that we do have some funding that is sitting in the Partners' fund balance that's designated for Aridale County to use for this purpose. So that is, do you want to touch on that, Jeff?
Sure thing, and good afternoon, everybody. And this is not a, this would not be a request for any new dollars. Aridale County puts Partners in their annual budget for some county dollars that are allocated to us. And between each fiscal year, if we have unspent dollars, those are maintained in a county-specific, you know, off-limits fund balance, and there's sufficient funding within that fund balance to apply to this project for that $25,000. And what we would do is just take money from that fund balance, contract that out to Fifth Street. It would be through Partners, but of course, it would be the county making that direct support via Partners to do that. So again, it would not be a request for any new dollars this fiscal year. It would just be utilizing the money that you already have on hand at Partners to support the project, if that would be the wishes of the board.
Anybody have anything for?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, critical time to focus on this.
Where are we going to deal with it, one way or another? And I think that's the most compassionate process.
Yeah, especially beginning of school time, because these are families.
Yeah, there's, there are kids that get picked up on, school buses there every day.
It's their home.
Yeah.
Partners is already working with, yeah. So I think there's several community people that's trying to help as well, so we appreciate that. So with that said, do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you all. You both.
Thanks, Jeff.
And I just want to take a liberty here and say thank you to Jeff. So Jeff has been really good to work with. Every time we have a need or something, we've picked up the phone and called him, and he, nine times out of 10, he's addressed that need in spades, and he's, he's been a really good individual and good representative of Partners Behavioral Health. He's been a great contact for us and has been a great resource. So thank you, because we've talked about three different items, and Partners has been, has been a contributor or a solution for three different items in this evening. So I think that, that speaks volumes. And for us to have that connection where we can just pick up the phone and call and say, hey, we got a problem, can you help us? And, and you do, and we appreciate that.
He's got the right name, Partners.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's on, that's it on the administrative, correct?
Yes, that's all of the administrative matters.
Going down the list, it brings us to the announcement of vacancies and occurring on boards and commissions. Do you want to hit that now, or are you going to wait until six, or hit both?
May I do both?
Both's fine.
Thank you. Just, just to get as much attention as we can on some of these vacancies that we have. We have six appointments on the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We have three appointments on the Centralina Aging Advisory Committee, Region F. Three appointments on the Farmland Preservation Board. One appointment on the Mooresville Planning Board, which is an ETJ member. Two appointments on the Mooresville Board of Adjustment, which are ETJ members. Six appointments on the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. One appointment on the Troutman Planning Board, which is also an ETJ member. One appointment on the Aridale County Board of Adjustment, and one appointment on the Aridale County JCPC Board.
Do you want to touch on the appointments that we'll do at six tonight for boards and commissions?
Absolutely. So we do have three different boards and commissions in which we have applications for. We have two applicants that have applied for the State's Full Planning Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ appointment. Unfortunately, neither one of those individuals actually reside in the ETJ, but we wanted to bring these before the board to let you know that we do have two applications for that. We do have one appointment for the Animal Grievance Committee, and this is a, an individual that is volunteering to serve for the first time, and that's Lance Gray. And then we have two individuals that have submitted an application for the two appointments on Lake Norman Marine Commission.
Any unfinished business for the four o'clock hour? Period is, we'll be at our next meeting, is always at our second meeting of the month at six o'clock. Any commissioner updates, or anybody want to wait until six?
Six.
Any new business? County manager reporting a thing at the four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, brings us down to closed session. We have two closed session items this evening. Our first one is property acquisition in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A5. And we have attorney-client, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, Aridale County versus Purdue, Purdue Pharma LP. Do we have a motion to enter a closed session after a five-minute recess?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in recess five minutes and then closed session.
And I will say that we will be having closed session in the South Wing Conference Room, which is downstairs at the main entrance.